The board meeting to order at this time. And first item on the agenda is, we always open up with a moment of silence and a pledge when we are meeting in our regular place, but since we moved here, we don't do the pledge. But at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Gilmore, if he would, to open us up with that moment of silence, and there's a special reason for that.
Before I ask for the moment of silence, I just want to tell you a little bit about Cindy Torbett, the guidance counselor who passed away from Colonial Heights Middle School. I hired Cindy in the summer of 2012 in an interview that did not start so well because she was late, and I am a stickler for being on time. And I just remember she came into the interview room and was apologetic, she'd been doing some yard work, and just very matter of fact, and I remember thinking, "You've got to be kidding me." And then I thought, first impressions are not always right, listen to her. And when we began to ask questions and she began to answer, there was just a smile, there was an easygoing nature, and it was very evident that her faith would inform her practice as a guidance counselor, and I thought that was very important for middle school students. So I hired Cindy, and I told her this story, and she laughed, and probably said one of her two phrases that she was very famous for. One of them was breathe. I might be getting stressed because I had an angry parent, or maybe this school board was doing something that was unpopular, and I would get upset, and she would just say, "Breathe, Mr. Gilmore." And she would say, "No worries," all the time. And I think the thing that was just the most incredible about her is she just laughed all the time. She was able to identify students and families that had needs and bring those needs to my attention, and she did all the other things that guidance counselors have to do. She was the test coordinator, and organized all kinds of other things, taught a class for us, and filled in as a substitute, all those other things. But before I came tonight, when Dr. Cox asked me yesterday, just to say a few things about Ms. Torbett, I texted my former secretary Carolyn Offant, who was dear friends with Cindy, as I was, and I just want to read what Carolyn sent me right before this meeting began.[220.62][220.62]"Several people told me how they loved being in meetings with her just to hear her laugh. She had such a contagious laugh. She would go to any length to find funding for a child in need. Her Sunday school class was constantly loading her with snacks, supplies, gifts for kids because we were not a Title I school, and there was not much funds for benevolence. If she couldn't get something, it always came out of her own pocket. She was one of the most generous people I ever met. I got to the point where I wouldn't tell her about some new things or things that I liked because it would appear on my desk or in my car. She loved to make her own cards or notes for kids who made a sports team, or good grades, or just needed encouragement. She had a machine that she would make personal notes and put in and on lockers for students. Her heart was always to build others up. She even made those clay bake-in-the-oven de-stressing rocks for kids who got anxious so they could hold it in their hand and rub it to calm down. She was not just a talking counselor, she was such an action counselor." So tonight, with our moment of silence, I hope you will, if you knew her, that you will remember her fondly, and if you didn't, that you will try to emulate her, and that you will remember in stressful times to breathe and to have no worries. Let's have a moment of silence. Amen.
I'm going to again do something unusual when we ask Mr. Gilmore about opening in a moment of silence. Little did I know that yesterday afternoon at 2:59, I received a phone call from Jack Bales, a former board member, served many years here with us, and was seated next to me on his side. He called to talk to me about salary equalization plan for teachers because he was on a committee. I was unable to take the phone call at 2:59, he left the message. At 8:29 last night, I received a message from his wife that he had had a stroke or heart attack and was unresponsive. And then about 9:15, she sent me a message that he had passed. And again, Mr. Bales was one of the most teacher-centered board members that's ever sit here around this table. Two weeks ago, he met with us on the salary equalization plan. Last Thursday, he called and wanted additional information, and that's what he was calling for yesterday. But he at heart wanted to make sure that the teachers were taken care of and that their salaries were increased. And if we could open him prior, I would, but sometimes that violates people's rights. But again, remember that family. She sent me a message at 11:15 last night that his request was to be cremated and that his ashes be spread on the ridge where they lived. Dr. Cox? Thank you, Mr. Jones. We'll continue with the agenda, and the first item is the approval of the agenda. And on the agenda, we need to make a modification and add an item, action item, that we discussed during the board work session, that would be the options for West Ridge High School as far as turf and things of that nature. So Dr. Cox, we'll be making a recommendation at the very end under action items for a vote.
B seven I.
B seven I will be the number on that. With that said, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as amended? We have a motion, have a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we have the agenda approved along with the consent agenda. Now we're ready for public comments. We have several public comments, and these are in no particular order. First one, and I do have names and addresses, so I'm not asking you to give addresses, you can give your name, so we'll have that in the record, but I have addresses and phone numbers listed here that I do not want to publicize on the broadcast. Nicholas Paget, first. And I'm not picking on you, Nick, I just happen to have you on top.
Hello, I am Nicholas Paget. I am a student at Holston Elementary School. High-speed internet is needed for all of us students in rural areas for us to be able to complete our work, but none of all of us students have access to this internet that is needed. I'd like you, the Board of Education, to take this problem into consideration and find a way to solve this. Possible solutions may grant hotspot's provided for those in need or working with local utility and internet companies to expand their service areas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nick. Next, Alicia Flannery.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I'm Alicia Flannery. I'm a parent of two daughters that attend Holston Elementary, and I'm also a local nurse practitioner here that works in the community. First, I just want to say, I know we're all aware of the plentiful evidence from studies that show it is in children's best interest to be in a classroom for face-to-face education. As elected board members of the Sullivan County Board of Education, you all agree to follow the policies set by the board. The Board Operation Policy 1 dot 2021, the Boardsmanship Code of Conduct states, "The Board adopts these standards as recommendations by the Tennessee School Board Association as a guide to its members as they provide educational leadership for the youth of our state." It also goes on to state, "I will at all times think in terms of children first, always determining other important things according to how they will affect the education and training of our children." This goes back to face-to-face education. It's in the best interest of our children to be in the classroom and taking this into consideration in all decisions made. In the emergency meeting last week, recommendations were made to alter the operational status. These recommendations, as stated by Dr. Cox, were staff recommendations, even after the Sullivan County Health Department noted that the increase or rise in cases have not been linked to our schools. I understand, in some cases, this change was recommended due to staffing issues and in the anticipation of what is to come. However, only making changes of closing our classrooms to our children is not going to make a large enough impact. Other changes need to be considered. In developing these recommendations, I would think that staff and the director of schools would think about our children and would have had their best interests in mind when making these recommendations. In questioning the local basketball league that does elementary school basketball, on how or if going to all virtual would change the current season, this is the response I got from the league. Dr. Cox said, "We could still play. He wants the children to have something to do." He gave permission right after the meeting. This is very concerning to me, as is continuing middle school and high school extracurricular activities. As stated by Dr. Cox earlier in the same meeting, that schools have not been linked to the community spread. It is the community spread being brought into our schools, and that schools have been doing a great job, and if the community was following the same strict guidelines, then the community spread may not have been as significant as it is. So what was the decision made? It was to close our classrooms and invite the community into our gyms, theaters, et cetera, thus increasing the risk of our staff of coming in contact with a community member that may be asymptomatic, and then they contract the disease. For an example, we have a local drama performance. The drama teacher talks to a parent that they normally would not have came in contact with. That parent is asymptomatic. The drama teacher, in turn, contracts COVID. This is putting our staff at risk. Keeping education and children first, as in the code of conduct, one would expect the response to be, "It would be best to cancel or postpone the seasons or extracurricular activities, as we must do everything possible to ensure our children can return to face-to-face learning as soon as possible, and decrease the staff's contact with the community." This is the type or kind of leadership that I want for my schools. Education should become first over everything else. And I know many believe that participating in extracurricular activities is a choice for their parents to make, and we don't have to let our children. However, the choice has been taken away from parents to send their children to face-to-face essential education. Education is essential, but we are allowing a choice for non-essential activities, which in turn jeopardizes...
We need to wind up your comments. You have three minutes, and it's already gone significantly over there, so.
Okay. Jeopardize going back to school. Our local healthcare system and health department, as noted in the meeting and in the newsletter, is urging us to avoid crowds in large gatherings. It's not recommending us to stay home from school for virtual learning, but attend our local extracurricular activity in the afternoons. We need to follow these recommendations and not just pick and choose when we follow these recommendations. And I would, I mean, this is all closed, since I'm running over my time. I know that everyone, including myself, is not always going to agree with the decisions made by the board, but I think we all can agree, or should agree, that keeping our children and their education first should be the main priority over everything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Tim Dale.
Hello, my name is Tim Dale. I'm a teacher at Indian Springs in the Sullivan County system, and I represent the teachers that belong to the Sullivan County Education Association. And from what I talked to the teachers since your decision last Thursday, they just said they appreciated the gravity of the choices you had to make, they appreciate the decision you made, and, you know, we talk about sustainability of face-to-face instruction. At my school today, we had six teachers out and our principal out due to some aspect of the COVID-19 situation. So it would have been very difficult for us to be face-to-face. So again, the teachers appreciated your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, Daphne Matthews.
I'm going to pull this down to talk, because otherwise you'll never hear me. I spoke with you all a couple of months ago about the children being out of school, but that is still a concern of mine. I still think they need to be in school, but tonight I just wanted to mention, I heard a rumor, which I have confirmed with a couple of people that would know, that you all have 99% decided to close Bluntville Elementary School permanently. Like I said, you know, I just heard it, but I have confirmed it with people who would know. And I don't understand why you would do that, because that school has been there for so long. I know that the middle school has had problems with infrastructure, and I had, you know, I had been of the understanding that that side was going to close long enough to, you know, make the repairs needed, but then I was just kind of blown away with the fact that all of a sudden Bluntville Elementary is going to be gone. And from what I understand, those students are going to go to Holston Elementary or I can't think of the name of it, it went off 11W. So I just wanted, I just wanted to ask why it's to the point that it's at and no one knew about it. Because from what I have learned, it has been discussed to the point of almost approval. There has already been an appraisal of the school for, to determine the market value. And I have also heard that Kingsport City is buying up Sullivan County schools. Now, like I said, nothing official, but I just wanted to address that and see if there is any truth to it, and if so, what is the thinking behind this? I appreciate your all's jobs, and I appreciate you have a hard job to do, but I would just like more communication on this particular subject. Thank you.
Thank you. Last on the list, Angie Stanley.
Thank you, Board. I just want to say thank you for all that you do for the Sullivan County school system here. You're very respected, and I know how it is to be sitting in y'all's seat up there. I have had some requests from people in my community to talk with you all about the naming of the new middle schools at Central and at South. I cannot express how important it is to keep these communities' identities. By changing the school names, you know, we have went through the whole process of building West Ridge High School. We've all said South Middle or Central Middle, and I feel like that it is very important to these communities not to take away that identity from them. A lot of the districts, the school districts right now, with East and Central and with North, they all have a school that was a former high school, and we're not going to have that at South. They'll be closing down Colonial Heights, they'll be closing down Sullivan Middle, and they'll be closing down South. I spoke with, I got a message from Mr. Jeff Lemming from Kingsport City, I'm sure a lot of y'all are familiar with him, and I would like to share with you something that he said. Quote, "When Douglas High School and Lynnview High School were closed, they were stripped from their identity. The latest renovations restored their colors and their mascots," that they did. "The alumni come out of the woodwork with trophies and memorabilia that they had hoarding hope to preserve the legacy. Finally, we did. It was very moving and emotional to see the alumni's reaction," end of quote. I don't think that we should be spending money to cover up our school's namesakes. I understand that there's controversy with some of the mascots, and we can work through that. We can name the mascot something different. And I would like to ask you all, whenever you go in and you put the names for the communities to vote on, everybody had the choice to vote on East Middle, Central Middle, but we didn't have the choice to vote on South Middle. And my community has asked me to come before you all today and ask you all if you could please add that to the survey that will be going out to the community. Instead of erasing memories, let's combine our memories. Let's bring everybody together in all of our school districts and come up with a name that it will benefit all of the communities, that it will benefit North Community, Sullivan's Community, and Colonial Heights Community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is communication to the board from Dr. Cox, and some of this we've covered in the work session, but...
Thank you, Mr. Jones. So we were down to the public-private partnership, so that's been discussed. And so next on the agenda would be discussion concerning the early retirement incentive. As Mr. Jones had spoken to earlier, the committee has been formed and is working on some options in tandem, I guess, with the salary equalization. So Mr. Jones will speak to both of those items, the early retirement incentive, and then the salary equalization committee update, which are kind of together.
These topics are interlinked, and I'm going to bombard you with information tonight. I apologize for that, but I think that it's important information that you have that you can look at later. The first thing that I will hand out to board members is a salary schedule comparing Kingsport, Bristol, Johnson City, Washington County, Hawkins County, state salary schedule with Sullivan County's. And the reason that I've done this, we have formed a salary equalization study committee that's made up of Richard Venables, Jack Bales was on that committee, Dr. Cox is on the committee, I'm on the committee, Mr. Hughes, Ms. Irisen. We were on the study committee, and we have ex-official members of some central office staff who are there. And our goal is to look at local salary schedules and to see what the problems are, and until you actually look at the salary schedules, you don't realize what a discrepancy there is in salaries in Sullivan County compared to other school systems. The data that you have there will show you some of those, but I have tried to condense some of it down into another report. If you'll take one of these, and I know, Mr. Hughes, Ms. Irisen, you may have some of this already, I've redone some of the reports. This second list coming around, and even though it may be a long meeting tonight, I think it's worthwhile to have a long meeting to identify areas and gaps in salaries. And as part of this process, not tonight, but part of the long-range process, is for us to look at the salaries for all employees, which includes maintenance, coaches, and other categories, we call them certificated and non-certificated. This last report that came out, I wanted you to look at Sullivan salary schedules compared to the region. And these are broken down by degree. The first one you see there is a BS degree. But you'll notice that Sullivan County is under the regional average by $2,000. That's at the beginning level. It gets more drastic as you proceed up the salary schedule. To give you an idea of how drastic it is, I pulled out two simple comparisons for you to look at. If you'll take one of these, and Rick, you're welcome to have copies of these, I have enough made for you also. This last one is a one-sheet one, but I want to call your attention to what I call the Step 30 salary. That means someone's salary who's been in the system 30 years, and they are at the top of the level. And if you notice, at the BS level, Sullivan County is the third column there, and their salary is about $14,000 less than Bristol, and about $17,000 less than Kingsport. And going on across, it's $14,000 or thereabouts less than Johnson City. We are slightly above Washington County and slightly above Hawkins County. But that's a 30-year step BS. Drop down to the master's degree, and you will notice the same thing. We are $18,000 behind Kingsport, and... We are $18,000 behind Kingsport and $13,000 behind Bristol. And we are $2,000 behind Washington County at that level. The next chart I wanted to give you is another eye-opener. This last one is a comparison of Sullivan County salaries to Bristol, and I picked Bristol because it was the easiest one to compare stepwise with Sullivan County. But the question, how much would it take to raise our teachers, our current teachers, to the same level as Bristol city school teachers? And I asked Mrs. Loach to give me a breakdown of how many teachers we had in the county at each step on this salary schedule. And our salary equalization study committee went through and discussed this. If we did it this current year, if you'll turn to the last page on your chart, it takes $5.4 million to bring our teachers up to Bristol's salary schedules. That's not just $5.4 million. That's a one-time amount of money. That's a recurring $5.4 million on a yearly basis. I have people all the time say, why do teachers leave Sullivan County and go to Kingsport or Bristol? In front of you, you have the facts and you have the answers as to why they leave. The next question that you have to ask yourself is, what can we do to raise salaries and do some equalizing of salaries? That means we've got to try to find some reoccurring money. One way of doing it is, we are in a unique time in the history of Sullivan County in that we are consolidating, we're actually closing eight schools and opening up three more, I guess. When you look at it, we're consolidating eight. We are right-sizing our schools. We have an opportunity to start looking at right-sizing the staff numbers that we need, and one way of doing that is to take a look at an early retirement incentive. I've had many teachers ask me for a plan for an early retirement incentive, and this proposal here, I think, has the, had the support of the entire salary equalization committee when we met and discussed it. And I'll give it to you, then I'll give you a breakdown of... This is not to say that we would have this many takers on early retirement incentive but this gives you an idea of what we're talking about. I have calculated the average salary of current teachers in Sullivan County, and I'm talking about current teachers who actually have 30 years' experience or more, and that's on your chart here. That's an accurate number as of this week. It's included the FICA tax. I have projected 50 teachers to retire and then replacing 25 of them. And if you do that, their taxes are included here. The tax proposal for retirement incentive is a one-time $15,000 payment for teachers, for those teachers who qualify, and I'll give you the qualifying criteria that we all talked about recently. This would save us $1.8 million on a yearly basis if we replaced 25 of the 50. You may say, well, do we have 25 teachers too many? Not necessarily. We may have that many when we start looking at ways of reassigning, redoing things. We don't know that for sure. But this gives you an idea of what we can do. Do we have 50 teachers who would take it? We don't know. But we have to discuss all these things in public. We have to discuss salaries in public. We have to discuss ways of meeting our budget in public and ways of increasing the monies that are available to help teacher salaries. The first-year savings on this would be more than $1 million, and then after that, it would be $1.8 million, as you can see on the list there. That's because we would be paying a bonus, or it's not a bonus, it's a retirement incentive. State law does allow school boards to authorize an early retirement incentive. That's listed in Tennessee Code. That's one of the duties of the board, just like all companies can do a buyout. Now, what would the qualifications be to qualify for that? I know there's probably many teachers at home, you know, listening to this for their first time, but we've tried to go through and talk about... Ever since I started serving on the board nine years ago with Jack Bales, he kept saying, "We can afford to pay our teachers more once we get our schools right-sized." And I am just sorry that he did not live to see that, but that's the last thing he said to me as we talked two weeks ago when he met with us on this salary equalization. His goal was to bring Sullivan County teacher salaries up to Kingsport. And I said, "You're being too optimistic, Jack." He said, "No, I'm not. We can find a way." And his honor, I would love to find a way to raise the teacher salaries. I know we can't do it all in one year. We may not be able to do it all in five years. But we've got to find a way to keep from losing teachers year after year to the surrounding city schools. And I'm seeing that coming from, as a former city school person. The money keeps you where you are, and it's important for us to find a way to pay our teachers what they deserve. The contract that you have in front of you is Certified Employee Retirement Incentive Plan. To qualify, you must have been in the county for 15 years at the end of this school year. Applicants must be currently employed in a position requiring a teaching certificate. This is for teachers only, certified teachers only, who are actually teaching. I know there's people working in the school system that have a teaching certificate but are not working in a classroom teaching position, but we're talking about people who are working in a position that requires a teaching license. Applicants for the early retirement incentive must be eligible for and apply for a service retirement, an early service retirement through the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System. There's basically three ways that you can qualify for retirement through the consolidated retirement system. That's 30 years' experience, age 60 and above, or age 55 with 25 years' experience. Only those who would qualify under that would receive the bonus. Applicants must have previously, must not have previously retired from TCRS. If somebody retired from another agency that is funded by TCRS, they could not qualify for this bonus. The key deadline here, qualified applicants must notify the director of schools in writing by February the 15th to be eligible to participate in this retirement plan. It's important for us to know how many people will participate. It's important for us to know what we need to fill for next year. We have to start working on next year's budget by January of this year, and I think it's due to the county, I think April 1st is the first deadline that the county's going to give us on revenue, but it's, I think, due by the end of April. Is that right, Ingrid? Do you know?
April 30.
April 30. So, it's important for us to know which positions that we have to fill. And normally, people do not have to turn in their retirement notice until April 1st, but to qualify for this, April 15th would be the deadline.
February 15th.
I'm sorry, February 15th. I must have IRS on my mind. Certificated employees who retire prior to the end of the school year would not qualify. If we have somebody who retires in December, they do not get the bonus. I know that there are some that's been talking about doing that, but if you've not turned it in and this board approves it, you may have to make another decision. But anyone who retires prior to the end of the school year would not qualify. The approved applicants would receive a one-time lump sum amount, less the applicable tax, and I think the tax rate is 20%, if I remember correctly, that would come out. Now, you'll get most of that back when you do your taxes, maybe. The retirement incentive has no effect on the insurance plan for retirees that's in Policy 3.6001, if somebody has a question on that. To get your insurance benefits, you have to be 15 years in the county, and those two things are kind of tied together. Now, on your sheet there, I have the definition of what the full retirement is and the early retirement, and you can see those. But it's, I will be asking the board to approve this tonight, if it would be your will. But you can see that if no one takes advantage of it, we haven't lost anything. If we have 50 people apply and we only need to hire back 30, we've gained 20 salaries there. It's not a way to get people out, but it's a way to right-size the staff numbers that we need. It's a way to, if we need to expand course offerings at some of the high schools, we've talked about that. And we know that there are some places where we might be a little heavy in areas. We don't know who the people are yet, but I present this to you as a proposal to, an action item, to allow Dr. Cox to start this early retirement incentive. We tried to shoot holes in everything to make sure that there wasn't a loophole that we left in this as far as people who would qualify. It has to be a certificated teacher who's actually working in a position that requires a teaching license. That's critical. That does include administrators, because that requires a teacher license. Do we, will we lose teachers and administrators that we would say, boy, I wish they hadn't retired, possibly? But it's a chance for us to move forward. It's a chance for us to find a way and find some reoccurring money. Then, the next thing that we have to do is to take a look at our state revenues, our local revenues, and see what else we can do. But I think we are at a critical crisis. I know we're in a critical crisis with COVID-19, but we're in a critical crisis when it comes to maintaining the quality of teachers that we currently have. And one way of doing that is to increase the salaries and to keep them with the county and to keep them doing the good job that they do. When a teacher first gets the job, they'll take the job and work for a few years with us because the salary range is not that much lower. But then, when you realize that you can make $15,000 more by driving 15 minutes longer and getting a job, people do that. I did it. But it is important for us to go back and try to correct some of those inconsistencies. I'll open you up for questions now on what I've given you here.
I'd actually like to make the motion. That way, we can actually start talking about it a little bit more than that, but I'd like to make the motion that we do that entire incentive.
I have a motion. Mr. Hughes, second. Anyone have questions then, or discussion points?
I'd like to make a few comments. First of all, I'd like to tell you what an excellent job I thought you did on these numbers. This didn't just happen. You guys pulled the numbers together, did a really good job. And second, I'd like to point out something that some of the board may or may not know. We are about 700 retirees versus 748 actives. So, that's just something we need to, as a board, you kind of need to know. After looking at these numbers, it's apparent that we can take a giant step toward closing that gap soon. And over time, we can almost completely close it. So, part of the reason that we're able to do that is, over the last five or six years, we've also did a lot of right-sizing as we went as far as, you know, paring down and reducing positions at about 20 or 25 a year. So, we've been working toward this for about five or six years. And as we go forward and we do right-size, we're going to have gains over the next four or five years that will put us in a position that we've never been in before, and we'll probably, this is an opportunity that we may never get again, and I hope we take advantage of it.
I would like to also say what Mr. Hughes said in that, Chairman Jones, thank you so much for all the work that you and your committee has done on this, because like Mr. Hughes said, this didn't just fall in place. This was hours and hours and hours and hours and hours of work. So, thank you so much to the committee that worked on that. As a parent, I saw my children's elementary school closed. As you're talking about right-sizing, did I like it? Absolutely, I did not. My head knew it was the right thing, but my heart was hard to grasp it. As a principal in Sullivan County, I was principal of an elementary school that closed. So, I had to deal with the parents and the teachers and the students in actually closing the school. So, those things are very hard, and it's very hard for your head to convince your heart that it is the right thing to do. That's very hard to get those two together. But in doing those things that you all have already done, that's now put us in the position to be able to recognize our teachers as the professionals that they are and give them due diligence to salary like our sister systems. So, I appreciate that. I'll just also add a Mr. Bales story, in that when I was elected to this position, Mr. Bales was, were the very first people that called me to congratulate me. And we had the same conversation, Chairman Jones, that you had, in that we've got to get those salaries raised, Mary, we've just got to get those salaries up. So, again, thank you for all the work you've done on this, and I absolutely will be supporting.
Dr. Cox just reminded me to explain the benefits of the higher salary in the last five years. And to give you an example, and we'll use a simple example. If a teacher goes to work and makes $10,000 more in Kingsport than they're making in Sullivan County for the last five years, that is a benefit of $5,000 per year for the rest of their life, because their retirement benefit is basically 50%. And that's not a benefit that the county has to pay for. It's an investment in the TCRS. It's funded, it's a defined benefit program, and it's the same thing for the city schools. So, that's why many of them jumped ship the last five years and go to get that extra money. And if you look at the upper end of it, it's $14,000, that's a benefit of $7,000 per year. So, it is critical for us to work on this, and it's probably an eye-opener for some when you start looking at the salaries, you don't realize how bad they are. It was a bigger gap than even I thought it was, as much as I'd worked with them when I started looking at some of those numbers. I started looking at some of those numbers. And we have sixty-two teachers currently, I believe, who have thirty or more years experience. And we may have more than that, because we have some who have twenty-nine years' experience with more than a year of sick leave, which would give them the thirty years. And this is not to encouraging anybody trying to get them to leave, but it's trying to find a way, if they want to, that we will right-size the system while we're doing all these consolidations. We have a motion on the table and a second. Any other discussion?
Actually, I just want to say one thing. I appreciate you allowing me to be on that team, but I want to acknowledge the fact that you did all this work. I believe you and Ingrid did the lion's share of this. I was an observer, and I really appreciate.
That doesn't matter. It's the努力 efforts.
But seriously, I do appreciate all the hard work you did on this. It was a fantastic job, and I want to thank you for it.
Thank you.
My only question, because I wish we could do even more, I know we all do, my only question is, do we have any sense yet how that would be spread out among the different teachers? Or, I mean, have you gotten to that step yet? I mean, this is the hard person, and I completely agree with Mr. Iverson and Dr. Rouse and Mr. Hughes. I mean, thank you, Mr. Jones. I know that this took tons and tons of time.
You're welcome. It's a privilege to do it. But Ingrid is currently working on the kind of breakdown of people with the category. I have not even seen the names. I don't, firstly, I didn't have a clue. I do know one or two who've told me they've got thirty years in, but I don't really know at this point. And I was trying to keep it all objective by not looking at names of who might be there. I know how many bachelor's degrees we have there and how many masters, doctorates, and so forth, but I don't have any names yet. But I have asked Ingrid to start working on, trying to get me some numbers should the board approve this, and we'll be ready to. And the normal way of doing one of these is to let people know that they qualify without them thinking that getting their feelings hurt that you want them to leave, because that's not the goal. But it's, again, just to try to right-size what we've got.
And then, just to clarify, I think I know the answer, but I assume this is just the first step in this committee, because hopefully, we're going to take the next step if this passes.
Okay. Thank you. And like I said, we may not be able to do it all done this year, but we've, our agenda is to take a look at the funding sources, is to take a look at coaching supplements, which we are way behind on coaching supplements, is to take a look at maintenance salaries and aid salaries and every group, every group that we have. And the administrative salaries, because administrative salaries are tied to teaching salaries. So if the formula for a teaching salary and administrative salary goes up, then that helps us too. A principal in Bristol would make constantly more than twenty thousand dollars more than a principal in, Mary and I both have been principals in Bristol, and it was a benefit to be there, wasn't it?
And the only other comment or question, because I know they can't see all these numbers, that I would make is, even though we're higher than Hawkins County and Washington County, and in most cases, the state average, we only have so much control over what we can do. One other thing the public can do and teachers can do is talk to your state representatives, because the state needs to be paying more of their share too, because a lot of the things that Mr. Jones mentioned aren't even funded from state dollars. Coaching stipends don't come from state dollars, correct?
Right.
So I just think it's important for the general public to know that we're going to try to do everything we can, but we can also try to put pressure on our state representatives and our state government to pay, help pay teachers what they deserve.
Mr. Chairman, is it fair, just for clarification for those people listening, is it fair to state that we could take a bite out of this difference, possibly in the next budget cycle? Is that a fair assumption for people to take away from this meeting? And while we're telling Jack Bell's stories, I think it's important to give people who came before us credit. I wanted to mention a couple of things. Mr. Green and Mr. Bell, when I came on this board, they cornered me on a regular basis. And I think they thought I was hard-headed, but they cornered me on a regular basis and veered me on this and how we would get here. So if you're a teacher out there, somebody that will benefit from this, remember that a lot of our decisions that came before now, as tonight, is enabling us to do that.
Mr. Iverson's called for question. Kristy?
Yes.
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 Thank you. One thing that I'd like to do at this time is to deviate just slightly from the agenda and go back and do our student recognitions. So. And so if I could have Kara Carter join me down front, and also Mr. Wooton.
I believe Mr. Wooton is the new golf coach at West Ridge High School. Is that correct? Congratulations.
This evening, it gives me a great deal of pleasure as Director of Schools to do some student recognitions, and we have a very special young lady, Kara Carter, who is with us this evening, and her coach, John Wooton. So the main reason that we're here is we have a certificate for you, Kara, for your many accomplishments, but probably the most significant is that you are the state champion, the individual state champion for the large school in 2020. And so I'd like to present to you this certificate that says Certificate of Recognition, that's presented to Kara Carter for the 2020 golf accomplishments. But I'd like to acknowledge the other ones that I have here. You finished your high school career with nine hole average of thirty-five, under par on most courses, the Big Eleven Conference Individual Champion, not once, not twice, but three times, the Big Eleven Conference Team Champion in 2019, the Big Eleven Conference Golfer of the Year in 2019, the Large School District Champion in 2019 and in 1920, and you qualify for the state tournament in all four years. You posted the fifth-best single round score in the state tournament, in state tournament history, six under sixty-six. You posted the best, the fourth-best two-day total in the state tournament history, one hundred thirty-eight, and you have signed a golf scholarship with Xavier University. So congratulations. Mr. Wooton, would you like to say a few words before we present the certificate?
I've told her all along that it's been a pleasure, you know, having the opportunity to coach her, be around her, get to know her. She's a great representative of South High School and Sullivan County schools. We wish her nothing but the best. So I'm sure she's glad that this trip, a routine of some meetings is over now, so she enjoys it, though. We appreciate you all, too, taking the time out.
Absolutely. And so Kara, on behalf of the board and myself, I'd like to present you this certificate of acknowledgement and appreciation. So thank you. Would you join me? Congratulations. Next, we have some very special students that we would like to recognize, who are our 2020 Christmas card winners. This is the fourth year that we have sponsored this contest. We had eighty-seven entries that were narrowed down from the schools. And so this evening, we're going to recognize the ten winning designs. And so some of the students could not be here, but we have some folks that are standing in for them. All of the winners in the winning designs are featured in the A Magazine for the Arts. It's a publication of Arts Alliance of the Mountain Empire. And so tonight, I have copies for each of you, and so I'm going to ask you to join me down here in just a minute, and I'll call your name when I do that. But you'll get a packet that has a copy of your winning design and a copy of the A Magazine for the Arts, in a publication that has also a photograph of your winning design. So let me go ahead and. So from Emmett Elementary, Abby Good. From Holston Elementary, Mary Ann Smith. From Indian Springs Elementary, Jaden Foster. From Miller Perry Elementary, Keaton Burton. From Holston Middle School, Addison Roberts. And Dr. Fields, if you would, we'll give this to you to take, all right? Also from Holston Middle, Laura Ly Laningham. And from South High School, Chloe Springer. Thank you so much. And could we have one more round of applause for all of our student winners? We have lots of talented students, and it's always wonderful to celebrate. So as we continue with the agenda, we are now to item five G, which is consideration of the operating status of Blountville Elementary for the 2021-2022 school year. I had the occasion this week, and Mr. Jones joined me, to visit with the faculty at Blountville Elementary School, and I'll share some of the same thoughts this evening as we shared with the staff. One of the questions that has been posed is what is to be the status of Blountville Elementary School, given the fact that with the consolidations of the middle schools, in this case, the student middle school population at Blountville Middle School will join the students at Holston Middle School to form a school on the current South campus, as will the other schools that will join on the South campus. And so what that leaves us with, in this case, would be two buildings that essentially would be operating at less than fifty percent capacity. And so should we entertain any discussion in possibly combining those student populations into one site, perhaps largely at Holston Middle School? Also, one of the things that could be discussed is whether some of the students who are districted and attend Blountville Elementary, who are closer, attend Central Heights. One of the things that we talked about and discussed is that the only way that the board can have a conversation about this is in public to discuss it. So if the board is interested in further discussion, and if you'd like further information, we just need to know that so that we can put that together, it would be my suggestion that if there is interest in further discussion, that we would offer an opportunity for the board to tour both of the facilities, at Blountville Elementary Middle School and also at Holston Elementary Middle School, as one of the possible next steps. So again, I just, I bring that to the agenda this evening so that the board can weigh in on that and give us further direction as to what you'd like us to do. I'm sorry. I, yes. Blountville and Holston will go to the Central Campus. Yes, I'm sorry. I misspoke.
I'll entertain a motion to continue the study of this, if the board so desires that. So Mr. Hughes makes that motion. Do you have a second? Dr. Rouse makes that second. Any discussion before we vote on the motion to continue?
I actually would. Earlier on, I guess, last week, Dr. Cox asked if it would be something that would be okay to put on the agenda, and I was fine with it being on the agenda, because I do think that some discussion's been happening, that it's definitely something to look into. I guess I have an issue with some of it, because, I mean, I'm with that zone. I'm not that zone at all, but I mean, with my zone, six years ago, they told me they were going to start closing some of our schools, and it was devastating to our area. So, but the problem is, we had six years to adapt to it and kind of adjust to it. I'm not sure what was said at that meeting. I have absolutely no idea with the meeting that you met with the teachers and Dr. Cox met with the teachers. I do know what they heard from it, because I had a thirty-seven-minute conversation today with one of those teachers, and they basically were saying, you're shutting down our school. Why are you shutting down our school? So, and I think, no matter what your good intentions may be, sometimes it's always going to come back, and everybody's going to hear it with their slam. And I get that, and I truly do get that. But with conversation with them, and I did feel for them in the way that they were saying, and they said, you know, hadn't 2020 been bad enough? Do you really have to tell me now you're going to shut down my school now? Because these kids are already suffering through the COVID, the hybrid, the virtual, the, you know, I mean, to continue, the hits keep coming. So is this really something that you want to start a discussion at this stage? And that was just the concern from the teacher, and a teacher and a parent, but still. And I get it, because my zone is being devastated by the decisions. And I understand, sometimes you have to make the hard decisions, and I do get that. But my zone also had six years to adapt to it, because, I mean, if it hadn't have been the discussions in 2014, I would have never decided to be on this board or even run for this position. So, I mean, I've been a part of this the entire time. I really kind of hate that we're doing this now, and with them, and with that discussion today, I do get it. Twenty-twenty's already been pretty brutal. Do we really want to tell them we're going to shut down their school in 2020 also? So I understand that something needs to be discussed and that we need to talk about it. I kind of hate that we're even discussing something that might be happening in seven months, when most communities had six years to kind of adapt to it. But, and that's just my opinion, and I understand, but that's it.
I would respond by saying, the timing is probably right for the discussion. I don't know what the board's decision will be, but I think it's one of those I don't know what the board's decision will be, but I think it's one of those things of, are you going to kick the can further down the road? Because when you rezone and when you, this year consolidate schools, we've got to do new bus routes. Billy Miller has been charged with redoing bus routes. And he's going to have to redo those based on elementary schools, based on middle schools, based on high schools. And if we leave Blountville open, which we may very well leave it open, we don't know that. But if we leave Blountville open, then we know that we close it two years from now. You're going to have to rezone again, redo bus routes. When we discussed the middle school closing a couple of years ago, the parents read about it in the newspaper the next morning and that came and said, and teachers said, "We, we were surprised about this." And I asked Dr. Cox this year, I said, "When you, after he polled the board, you must go talk with the teachers to let them know because they don't need to read it in the newspaper." And that's why the conversation was last week that, that he had with them. And I can assure you that they, they were told there's been no decision made. Because I can't speak for the board, you know, I don't know individually what you all would, what you all would do. I think what we need to do if we vote tonight to continue the study is to go tour the building, to look at the condition of the building, to go look at Holston Middle School, Holston Elementary, Middle School complex now and look at, and compare the two to talk about the pros and the cons. Because before you can make a decision, you need to know what the facts are and try to keep the emotion part out of it. And that's the hardest thing to do, is to keep your emotions out of it. And, you know, everybody knows that over a period of time, schools are going to have to close. And we've been doing that. And when you look back, we've closed how many schools in so and counting in the last 20 years? I think 11 plus these eight we're doing now, something like that. It's a, right, Paul, it's a bunch of them. And so, it's. Impacted by annexation, impacted by, by lots of things. And once the system gets right-sized, facility-wise and everything else, then we can accomplish some of the things that I mentioned earlier on about the salaries. And until we do that, you know, we're not going to be able to accomplish what we need to accomplish. Now, if the board decides that Blountville is to stay open, then we've got a decision to make of, "Okay, what do we do with the rest of Holston? Do we leave it sitting there empty?" If you look at Blountville, you got to decide what do we do with the Blountville Middle School side. And I had county commissioners calling me today saying, "It's your own decisions. You're going to make a, you're going to make a tough decision." And it is up to the board to make decisions, not up to anyone else. And it's, it's unfortunate. We don't want to blame somebody else with it. We have to step up and do whatever the right thing is based on the facts. And I don't think we know exactly what the right thing is yet, but we all probably got a lean in of a certain way. But I would just encourage you to be open about it, look at, look at the facilities, look at the pros and the cons, and not let the feelings get in the ways of, of making those decisions.
I would, well, I'm sorry.
I would like to mention, you know, part of the reason we're able to do a lot of the things we're doing now are these very tough decisions. And I would remind, I don't, I can't remember who was here and who wasn't, but a couple of years ago, we did have this discussion and many of those same people in that community asked us to wait till this year. They pointed out that it was sharing a heating system and some of those things and we did just that. We were considering three schools at the time and we thought that some points were well-made and we decided to wait till this year. And I think now is the time for the discussion, if we are going to do it. I thought some of those arguments then were valid, sharing the heating systems. And why would you do that knowing you're building, you're going to be making this transition this year? So, they, they probably didn't have six years, but they have had some time to think about it. I, I think, I don't think anybody ever forgot about it. But I think if we're going to have this discussion, now is the time. And I think they, we actually did listen to them, unless I'm misremembering it. And that what you remember hearing?
Yes.
I think that many, many of those faculty that spoke that night mentioned waiting until this year, so.
I think that was for the middle school though. That was for the middle school. That wasn't for the elementary.
They were just talking about the facilities because it was the first time I'd even heard that we have a heating system on the middle school side that heats the elementary. I can remember that was an eye-opener to me that, you know, that we didn't know that. I didn't know that. I won't say we didn't know it, but I did not know that until they presented it in an open meeting. And we had some teachers ask us, "If Blountville is closed, can we blue, can we move Blountville as a unit because of COVID-19 and move them as a unit into Holston and keep them as a separate school for at least a year or two?" I'd never thought about that. I thought it was a good idea that we needed to consider. It might cost a little more, but, you know, it made sense that it dealt with the issues that they've dealt with this year. Just moving them as a separate school into a facility that's better, better heated, better lighted and things of that nature.
So like co-locate instead of consolidate?
Yeah, and that's what, that's what they asked for and I never thought about it. But lots of these things we won't think of until someone, you know, mentions of it. It was a valid point. I think Mr. Miller took a whole page of notes, didn't he, Billy, on, at that meeting? I got him, I just didn't, I was too, too busy working on something else, so. Other points of discussion before we get back to voting on whether or not to continue?
I get, I guess, I understand, I see what we're saying here. I've, I've toured Blountville Elementary, I get all that. But I'm kind of like Mr. Ierson here. It's about two years ago, we redone the plan of our consolidation and took one school off that was on that plan saying it was going to close. And now, we're bringing up another school to close. Whenever, we seen the numbers back then of what it was going to do to the schools when we went to the consolidation. I, I just, I don't like how it's getting done. I've, I'm from the North Zone. I've seen my elementary school close. My middle school turned into an elementary and now my high school's gone. And you said to all them schools that closed, if people look, most of them was in the North Zone. I can ride through Bloomingdale now and Lynn Garden and there's a big change when you close schools down. A big change. I get it's money. I, I understand that. Everything comes down to money, unfortunately. But what this does to the communities is, isn't right. I just wish, kind of like Mark, I think back two years ago, I think it was when we redone that plan and took that one school off that was on there to close. This should have been brought up then if it was talked, if it was thinking as it was going to happen in the future.
All we would be voting on is whether we're going to actually continue to discuss it. Is it not the school board's job in operating facilities to evaluate them and discuss them?
Yes.
The only way the public knows, we only deal as a public body. We can't talk about this outside of the public. So, I, I completely understand Mr. Ierson's sentiment and Mr. Robinson's. But really, the only way we do our job is to talk about it and to get the information. The only way we hear from the public is to talk about it. So, I definitely have no objection to doing our job, which is to evaluate facilities. We can go tour, we can talk about these things in public.
So, the motion is to continue the discussion of relocating Blountville Elementary School. And we will do that by public discussion and by tours of the buildings. And if we tour the building, we have to notify Mr. Wagner and others that we're going to be touring the building as, as a group. And I would think and encourage us to do it as a group. So, we all see the same things and, and I've not toured everything that's in the Blountville Elementary. I think it's wise to take a look at what I was there and hear from people who've been around a while.
Right, because I mean, I would, I would point to some of the good things that have happened with some of the facilities that, that we were just talking about, the Holston Valley. And then the other facility that, I'm going to mispronounce his name, but Mr. LeJure and what that does in a community. Because, because Mr. Robinson's point is well-taken. Closing a school does change a community. But the only way that, that we can be responsible fiscally, and I would disagree with overall sentiment that it's all about money. No, it's all about education and education is funded by tax dollars, so money goes into play. But, but I don't think of it as all about money. But the only way that that community and, and our entire community can do things with buildings if they are ever closed is if we talk about it in public and we work together as a community. And, and maybe there are other options if we ever got that far. Maybe we never get that far, but the only way we know is to talk about it.
And the original facilities plan, Paul, called for a new elementary school in this area and that's when Blountville had been closed. But we know that there's not going to be any money available for many, many years probably to build new facilities. There was two new facilities supposed to be in the plan, whether still in the plan. But, and some renovations, but that, all that takes money that the school system doesn't have. And that has to come from our funding body, which would be the county, county commission. But, but until then, we have to work with what we've got. And what we've got is two school buildings that will be 50% at capacity. And that's Holston and Blountville. And we need to make some decisions of what we do and not tonight. But the only way to do it is to talk about it and look at suggestions. Any other discussion? If not, roll call.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to continue to study this and look at it passes five to two. And I would encourage Dr. Cox to set up a tour sometime within the next two weeks if we can. And for us to look at our schedules and let him know, you know, possibly when you could do that.
I'll, I'll be in touch and for date options to, I, I just, I would suggest if, if possible to perhaps do the tour, if we could do it on the same day, just for the efficiency of time. Alright, then, moving on in the agenda to unfinished business. We have a policy for second reading, to adopt on second reading. Policy four, point 205 enrollment in college-level courses. And so, we do recommend approval on second reading.
You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Gilmore makes the motion?
I'll second that.
Mr. Spivey seconds. In discussion. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Moving on to the next item, seven A, A through H. These are policies that are presented for your consideration this evening on first reading, which doesn't require a vote, but just a note on those. These are all policies that have been recommended to us by TSBA as a subscriber of Policy Services to make these changes, most of which are recommended as changes in law or, or other reasons as, as the policy analysis work is done at TSBA. So, I just would recommend them for your consideration on first reading.
I had one quick note on item F, policy 6.308. In my review of it, it looks like it cites to footnotes three and four, but just in the drafting, there is no footnote three and four. So, I'm not sure if the citation's missing or just some, maybe you could recirculate that.
Okay, that, that is the bus conduct policy. Is that right? Yes, 6.308, alright. Mr. Miller, if you'll help us remember that, it appears to be missing a citation. Thank you, Mr. Spivey. Any other comments or observations? Okay, if not, moving on, the next policy request is, we are requesting this evening from the Policy Committee, suspension of the rules and to adopt these policies on first reading. The first is policy 1.901 charter school application. And this is because of the change of a date due to a change in the law. And then, then the testing program, which actually goes with the next agenda item, the, the change in, in testing protocol. So, we ask for waiver of rules and to adopt these policies this evening on first reading.
Need a motion to waive the rules?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Spivey makes a motion. Do you have a second? Have a second, Mr. Hughes. All those in favor, we can do that by voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, we need a motion to adopt those two. Motion for Mr. Hughes. Have a second. Second, Mr. Ierson. Roll call.
I had one question, I'm sorry, about, uh, let's see how it's listed, policy 1.901. My only question, and I assume since it came from the TSBA, the answer's self-explanatory. I just want to make sure though, is the dates have changed a lot on the charter school applications? Is that a change in state law? I mean, I assume it is because that is on a tight time schedule usually and it's spelled out by statute, but.
That, that's my understanding. Ms. Buckles, do you recall specifically?
Right, okay. So, it changed that, that and the appeal process, right? Okay.
But both are changes in, in law.
Thank you.
Item C, okay, did they vote? Oh, we haven't voted yet. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes, okay, thank you. And then, item C is a recommendation also from TSBA. We're asking the board this evening to consider suspending the weighting test scores part of policy 4.7 for only the 2020 school year. And essentially, what this does is it's, the part that it's suspending is the requirement that 15% of the grade come from the end-of-course test. We, we, what we would like to do and is agree with TSBA that we would waive that this year and replace that with a final exam. We feel that, that teachers are in a better position to assess kids on the course content that's actually been covered in the class instead of the end-of-course. We think this will benefit students and, you know, there is legislation that will be considered about no negative consequences of assessments to schools and students. And this is furthering with that sentiment. So, we do recommend for your consideration tonight, the suspension of the weighting test score portion of, of policy 4.7, only for the 2020 school year.
You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion? Question, please, need a motion first?
Yeah, I was going to, I guess, yeah, go into the motion, I guess, but.
Need a motion? Motion, Mr. Hughes?
I'll second that.
Is that Mr. Spivey?
Yeah, sorry.
With, with the mask, I can't read the lips anymore. Second by Mr. Spivey. Down to discussion.
Just more of a question. I thought that earlier on, the last couple of years, it was not, it was the legislature that decided that the, the testing had to be, I mean, we had to go to them for them to actually waive it when it wasn't getting back on time. I thought that the state was making this requirement. So, I, I'm just, just kind of making sure that it's something we have the ability to waive. I mean, I figured TSBA's saying it, it would make sense, but the legislature's the one that said we had to, right?
They said, they said we have the ability to waive it. I listened to a webinar from Ben Torres and he recommended this, that, he said all school systems are doing it. But you can't just automatically waive it unless they legislate it, you can. And that's, you know, kind of where we.
So, they did legislate that we can and this is why this came through?
That we can. We still have to do it because of federal rules, I believe, if I remember correctly.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure because I knew that they were the ones driving it. So, I didn't know what TSBA was saying.
In the past, it's because of turnaround time, but this time it's because of everything else. Motion, I mean, we've got the motion, so roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Next on the agenda for your consideration is item D, which would be a, a proposal for managing substitute teachers. We bring this to you as information this evening. We're not asking for board action. We're not asking for board action because it is new information, but it kind of goes with the discussion of substitutes in general. We had talked about, and it goes a little bit with the next item, which is consideration of additional stipend for substitute teachers. As you know, one of the problems that all of us have is having substitute teachers having enough because of several reasons, and it's become increasingly difficult to have substitutes in the current environment of the pandemic. And just looking for different kinds of solutions. One of our neighboring school systems has partnered with ESS, which is a company, to manage the substitute teachers of it. And I'm going to ask Ms. Deloach to come forward, who is working with this, and the company representative. But one of the key differences, which is a benefit to those who do subbing, we are limited to the number of days that we can actually hire them without offering them benefits. This proposal, if we enact it, would allow teachers to teach five days a week. It would offer them the benefits of health insurance and also a retirement or a 403B program. And so Kingsport City Schools does use this. I have checked and have spoken with Dr. Morehouse. They do, they're happy that they did make the change. So Ms. Deloach?
This is a, basically, we just have to do a markup on our current pay rates for our substitutes. They will take our current base that we have, our employees that we have as substitutes, and they will make them ESS employees. All their benefits, paychecks, everything comes through ESS. They will no longer be Sullivan County employees, but they'll be ESS. And they will pay them at the current rates that we're paying, and then we'll just pay that markup for that. It's currently at thirty-one percent, and the proposal will pay thirty-one percent above our pay rates to have this service. Like Dr. Cox said, the benefit to our employees would be, or to the substitutes would be, that they can work five days a week. We currently cannot work our substitutes five days a week because we do not provide them benefits. But as ESS provides them benefits, they can work them five days a week. So should we have someone willing to sub five days a week, we can get the full power out of that. That's a benefit for them. They also offer them health insurance, dental insurance, 401K. So the question was asked to me, what would be their take-home pay? Well, they're going to be paid the same rate that we pay, but then it's going to depend on what they choose for benefits. So that's their option, what they choose, and I couldn't tell you exactly what each sub would bring home, but I can tell you that their pay rates will not change, but they'll just have the opportunity to get benefits at that. The contract that they have proposed, and this is just for your information. We don't expect a vote tonight, but we kind of wanted you to have this so you could see it and explore it, and then we can talk more in detail next month. But the contract that they have proposed will be a one-year contract with four one-year renewal options after that. So it's a single-year contract, but they will hold that price for four years after that, and we can renew that contract as we go. Again, Kingsport has started this program, they like it, it's very good. They'll send someone to our district to be a recruiter. They'll be at ball games should we get to go back to normal. They'll be at ball games, they'll be at parent events, out in the communities, trying to get substitutes to come into our system to work. So that's an added bonus. I cannot go out and recruit actively. I'm doing good to get my job done. So that, they'll bring somebody just to our district to do that, so it'll get the word out. I really don't see many flaws in this, but I have not used it before. So it's just something, we will know more when we get there. I have talked to the systems that do use it, and they are satisfied.
I would just add, if I may, one of the things that would be a change too is it does take it out of our payroll and our finance. So we, our relationship would be just with ESS, and we would send basically one monthly payment to them. They are responsible for calculating payroll and doing all of that. So that would be one less responsibility for our payroll department.
And an added bonus, I received a complaint from a substitute yesterday about monthly payrolls. Our subs are paid monthly. It's my understanding with ESS, you're paid weekly, so they'll get their money faster.
Do they do background checks and fingerprints on employees?
They sure do.
You may have answered, said this, but I couldn't hear. Are we locked into, if we enter into some agreement and do this, what's our obligation?
It's a one-year contract, one-year contract with four one-year renewals after that. So they'll hold that price basically for five years, but we are locked into a one-year contract. And then we have the option to renew every year thereafter for four years.
So if we decided to change what we pay them daily, it wouldn't have any effect other than what we sent to them monthly? Is that correct?
Yeah, they just send you an invoice, do they not?
That's right.
I had experience with a different company in Bristol, and basically had good experience until they raised the pay after, I mean, raised the charges after about four or five years. And that was the only negative thing that I could be critical of and kind of of a sudden notice. So that's the only thing I would caution us to make sure that we have a, if we, if they do a pay raise after four years, that they have to give us so much notice so we can get in the budget.
This is a big piece for HR as well as payroll, just substitutes in general. It's very complicated for HR to get everybody in, get the paperwork, because lots of times our substitutes don't stay very long, so it's a constant turnover. Payroll, it takes hours to do the substitute payroll every month. So this would be an added benefit to both the HR department and the payroll department to get that pushed out to an outside company.
And I think another benefit is, if they work like some of the others, that the principal can call and say, I do not want this substitute back, and they will put them off the list, and...
Definitely, if we have, and we addressed that in our call, if there's a complaint about a substitute, we could flag them, and they will no longer be called in our system. As well, the substitutes can say, I would rather just sub at Mary Hughes, or I'd rather just sub at Sullivan Gardens. They can flag that in the system as well, just like they do in our system now.
Might just ask the question, if the teachers can ask for specific subs, do they allow that?
They sure can.
Okay.
They actually utilize the AESOP system that we use now.
Right.
So it's, there won't be much change on the teacher end.
Right. Thirty-one percent. That's the only negative. It's worth it.
It would also lower our liability in some regards too, wouldn't it? I mean, because they're no longer our employee? Or would that not be, I mean, would it still be? It seemed like we'd lower our liability on that also.
I'm not a lawyer, but I would think it would lower your liability just a little bit because they're not our employees, kind of like contracting for bus owners. We lower that liability as well.
Yes, it might, I don't, I don't, I don't know the answer to this, but subs probably don't qualify for workers' comp. Do you know that?
They would qualify for workers' comp, but I don't think it would be unemployment that they qualify.
Okay. So that would take them off of our workers' comp?
I just had a sub send me a text and say, can I still substitute?
Yes.
My wife just sent a text, say, can she still substitute?
The comment, if the substitute's not doing what they're supposed to be doing in a school, and the principal does not want them back, do they call that company? Or do they call HR here in Sullivan County, then HR takes care of it with the company?
They can do it either way. If they'd like to call HR, we'll gladly talk to the company and have a flag issued. Or they could go straight to the company if they wanted to.
I would think that that might be something that we would want to consider, and it'd be one way or the other, though.
I agree with that, and I would feel most comfortable if it was to go through HR, and that way we know if we've got somebody in our schools and why we want them out.
And that is how we did it in Bristol as well.
Well, again, we're not asking you to vote on this this evening since you just got it, but I would like to put it on the agenda for January seventh for your possible consideration. Any further questions or comments?
Actually, Dr. Cox, I would actually like to have this as a first treaty. That way we wouldn't have to do it double time. So if this is something that we like and like to continue with it, we'll get more information between now and next meeting, I'm sure.
We don't need to read it, is it?
Won't need twice. Never mind.
Okay.
It's not confirmation.
Okay. So the next item is a little bit like that. One of the discussions we had, if you'll recall from previous board meeting, we were talking about ways to try to get subs to, entice more subs. We talked about a proposal soliciting potential subs from our pool of retirees. The idea was that if we could get someone who is TCRS retired, we don't have to pay benefits, we could offer a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day. And so even after having tried that, we really have not had a response to that where that makes that a go. So then out of that came potential inequity with the folks that are currently subbing. So as we dug into this and we considered this, we think that it's really a better deal long-term for our subs if we would enter into this agreement with a company like ESS so that subs can get benefits and have more stability. So that's, that is, the item E is the consideration for a temporary stipend, so.
But we can still, we can still have to pay, can't we?
You can. Even on a temporary basis. I asked for this to be on the agenda because after I saw that we did award the one twenty-five for retired teachers, I had several calls from substitutes that had worked with us for thirteen, fourteen years. And I thought that it would be prudent to offer something, even if we had to sunset it for a year or something, maybe to try to take in the pandemic. But I was thinking a hundred dollars a day would cause people maybe to feel like it was worth their time and take the risk to come out. And I mean, that's really not that much anyway, but we're at sixty, we went from fifty-five to sixty-five this year. And I know that we could possibly utilize some of those CARES dollars. So those were my thoughts. So, I mean, we can. And one of the things that, it's a part of a larger discussion, you know, as we said, CARES is a two-year grant. We don't know yet whether or not there will be further stimulus money in CARES two. But one of the things that we need to be careful about is as we think about prioritizing the use of CARES money into next year, we probably just need to take a longer view. So my suggestion would be that we look at that in the context of all the other decisions that we would make with CARES funding. What are some of those, what are some possible, I mean, give us some examples of what we use the CARES money for, and give me some examples of something that might be more, more important, I don't want to use the word important, but maybe take a priority. Well, like I said, the funding in this CARES grant is for two years. We have lots of supports that we had to put in place to support teachers with, you know, the technology coaches, with the temporary personnel to manage the virtual learning academy. We have social emotional support is one of the priorities. So, I mean, there are several things like that. We have some of the software applications, the licenses, the licensing fees that go through, like I think one is the ClearPass, which is, provides the security for the online. So those are some of the things that we just have to evaluate what we would pay for in the second year. It's a, it, CARES is through 2022. I would, Randall had some, I thought, a good suggestion there. I would then make the motion to do it till the summer and then reevaluate it. And then we would get some idea, and really, you know, we're at now, we're probably not using many subs at all in the virtual world. So it may not cost us much of anything, but we, I know one lady that has taught, substitute taught every single day since the pandemic began. And I think it's a wise way to utilize those dollars. And I would not disagree that maybe there's, maybe we need to relook at it later in the year. I don't mind that, so that would be my motion.
We have a motion to pay subs for a hundred dollars a day till the end of this current academic school year. And motion by Mr. Hughes, second by Mr. Iverson. Any discussion?
Only clarification, sixty-five, so it's really only thirty-five more?
Only thirty-five more.
Okay. That was my only question.
This was something that we actually would discuss at our last meeting, and, you know, we all know that it's an issue and a problem trying to get the subs. And one of the people I was talking to at Kingsport is doing a sign-on bonus, and they're paying more than us. So I really think that this is something we're going to have to do if we want to have subs and keep the schools open whenever we open back up, and I'm for this a hundred percent.
Just like teaching salaries. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes, seven oh.
Thank you. Next is proposed lease for the Sullivan East Middle School property, and Mr. Hull is going to speak to that.
We have been approached by a gentleman named Josh Cunningham, and he has had cattle on the fifteen-acre parcel up at Sullivan East Middle School where the previous owner, when he was still owning it. And he would like to put his cattle on there and lease that from us. He has been paying five hundred dollars a year to the previous owner to do that. I was not certainly knowledgeable enough to know whether that's a reasonable amount, but I think Mr. Hubbard said it is. So that's the information I have on that. And I guess I would say run it on an annual basis, it was going to be five hundred dollars a year. So we might be able to do it from January one to December thirty-one. I guess it's reasonable to think there's some potential for some liability exposure there. If, I was just thinking it through, I guess if you were bringing a load of cattle in, you'd have somebody with you, and if that somebody fell and got hurt or whatever, if there was a dangerous place on our property or something, you know, that could be an issue. I guess a positive would be, you'd hope the cattle would keep everything, the grass mowed down. So I just bring that to you for your consideration. I would suggest that if that's, if the board is agreeable to that, if you'd make the motion and vote for it, then I'll do the lease and let Mr. Jones sign. I didn't bring you a lease because I wasn't sure whether you wanted to do it, and, you know, it'll be some expense to getting the lease done. So we can do it however you want to do that, but just bring that for your consideration.
I guess, I know we need to make a motion first. I would deviate a little from the, I would make the motion that if we're going to consider it, that we at least are shown the plat of land that we're talking about. I know we can talk about it, we've all been out there, but, and show how it's fenced and have that information a little more specific than just, hey, graze cattle out there, so. Yeah, that was my exact point. I wanted to know what the confines of that are, and even if it's an aerial, and then we could, I just, I don't feel like we have enough information to go so far as to say lease. So my motion would just be that we obtain some more information.
And since we're doing that, I would like...
And since, since we're doing that, I would like to also make sure that whatever we do, and I'm, I have no problem with, but I'm like Matthew, there's other, other things to consider. It is fenced, by the way.
Okay.
There were cattle on it up until just a short, a short time ago. But, you know, Ms. Torbit was working with something with the Park Service for Historical Park. And whatever we did there, I wouldn't want it to take precedent or stop, stop whatever, you know, if there was, if there was something there that interfered, I'd, I'd like to have the right in the lease to revisit it or something.
And I did make clear, I guess, this is the 15 acres that we had the delayed closing on. So it is that distinct part of, of the property there.
I'd recommend that if you, if we do it, that we put in the lease that there's a 30-day or a 60-day right to end the lease with them, should Mrs. Torbit or somebody come with a proposal that we, that we need to move elsewhere. And I think we could do that if, if he's interested in doing it, because we're, we're basically doing him a favor. I guess he's doing us a favor of keeping the grass and cutting it down, but.
So let me just clarify, are you, would you like to see a draft lease and a plat? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Okay.
Matthew said table it, or basically that's what we're doing.
Okay.
But add those things to it, a draft lease and.
And a plat.
Okay. So I'll, I'll bring that back for the next meeting.
But I would, I'd recommend a clause that would let us end it should we need to for whatever reason.
Right. I think that's a good idea.
Mr. Hull, I think we also, going back to what Mr. Spivey said, I think you need to include in that lease something about the fencing, just so that there are no questions later after the fact. Because we can all build a good fence today, but by next week it needs to be maintained again.
Well, I, I guess we're maintaining the fence. I mean, it's our, our fence. It's my thought.
If you, I'm not real sure, but if he's, you're leasing it out, the guy's putting his cattle on there, he's going to be in charge of all the upkeep on that land. Anytime I've ever heard of anybody leasing any land for cattle, upkeep's them.
Yep.
Fence is them, everything around that is them.
Yeah. I just put that in contract, he's responsible for.
We need to, I can probably reach out to a couple of guys I know and see if I can get some kind of contract that they have if you.
Well, that'd be great.
If you have something to go by, I'm sure, you know, to help us out with that. But I've been around it a couple of times, and if you lease it out, that's all yours. The owner's not responsible for that fence. If your cow gets out, it's, it's yours if you leased it.
Well, I guess my thought is, we're not like a private owner. We, this is our property. It's public property. We're responsible for it being maintained. So we can keep an eye on him and make sure he's doing a good job. But ultimately, it's our responsibility.
And I understand your point completely. But here again, we're not going to, I don't think the Board of Education is in the business of doing five strands of barbed wire. But that might be what he wants to do to maintain his cows, you know.
They do, they do electric fences. Now, you just dated yourself, Mary.
Do you have any comment on that, Mr. Hubbard? I don't.
No, it is leased now and water is on, on part of it. It's been kept on for the year recently.
Does that need a vote?
No, he tabled it.
Okay. All right. So we just come back with the lease and plat?
Yeah. We'll put that on the agenda for next month then.
All right. So we'll come back with a draft lease and a plat. And Mr. Robinson's going to share some contract information.
And some five-strand barbed wire design, right?
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. The next item is, is item G. And that's what we talked about early with Ms. West earlier tonight. We have before you a recommendation to approve the change order for the lighting at Westridge High School. We do recommend its approval.
You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Mr. Hughes.
Second, Mr. Iverson. Any discussion?
Just a point of clarity, I think you mentioned it in the work session, or Dr. Cox did, but this is part of the, the money that the County Commission had approved that we could use from our reserve as well, right?
That's right. Okay.
Any other discussion? Pro call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes, 7-0.
Thank you. Next item is item H, and it's the FF-CRA requested extension of the 10-day leave benefit. I do have a memo attached to that as well as just the abridged information sheet. The essential piece of this is that the FF-CRA has several provisions, and those are set to expire if not reauthorized by December 30. We operate on a fiscal year, or school year as part in one calendar year and part in another. And this benefit is extended to employees who, through no fault of their own, become ill. And it gives them 10 extra days in, in front before expending their own sick leave for if they are sick with coronavirus. So given that we have two parts of a calendar year, we are asking that just that benefit be extended for the balance of the year that would expire at the end of June. Now, several other entities are considering this. I know the, the County Commission had a similar action that was slated for their agenda this evening. They, they weren't able to have it because they had to cancel it. But it's, it's, it's something being considered by lots of employers. So I, I would recommend this evening that we would extend only that piece or that portion so that, for example, an employee who would have need of that, say in March, wouldn't be penalized, whereas people in October may have gotten that benefit. So that's what I recommend.
You've heard the recommendation that we extend the 10-day leave benefit under the FF-CRA extension. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Mr. Spivey made the motion, Mr. Gilmore, no, Mr. Gilmore made the motion and Mr. Spivey seconded. They're going to get clear masks so I can read your lips.
I'll talk louder.
Any discussion?
Yes, a couple of questions. For clarification, we're extending, we're not adding a 10-day.
No, no, yeah, that's a good question, Mr. Hughes. This, this, it would no one, in no case would anyone have more than 10 days. And so if someone had, oh, excuse me, if someone had already used 10 days, they would not get 10 days more. It just extends that benefit for, for a total of 10 days for the school year.
Do we have a policy or procedure for verification on, like, people, people who quarantine? I know where I work, you know, if we, you know, if somebody quarantines, there's, we got a procedure. If we do, if we do work, could we find that?
The procedure.
I had an employee ask me that.
Yeah. The procedure's through the contact tracing, and that, that's accomplished through our, our staff. Ms. Copas heads that up in collaboration with the Health Department.
I don't have any trouble with extending the benefit. I mean, but FF-CRA ends at the end of the year. So shouldn't we somehow rename it? Or, I mean, we need to clarify that we're not extending the FF-CRA, because no matter what we do federally, it's done.
Right.
So.
I think, I think they've given you, that's the authority to do it though, haven't they?
Yeah. It's just, I'm, I'm not asking to extend FF-CRA. I'm just asking the 10-day benefit is all. I, I thought I'd clarified that. You know, but my last sentence is I would not recommend that we extend any other provision of FF-CRA unless Congress would take further action. Of course, if it's, if it becomes federal law, then we're mandated to do so. But, yeah. No, no, that's not my recommendation. My recommendation is only to extend that and, and to Mr. Hughes's point, not for another 10 days, but so that any employee would only have, within the context of a school year, one 10-day benefit.
You've heard the motion. We have a second on that. Any further discussion? If not, pro call please.
Yes.
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 Thank you. We're now to what we added on, which is item I. And that goes back to our previous discussion earlier this evening. Yes. So the recommendation is that, that we would, since the board had taken previous action to bid out all of the fields, having heard this information, and I did receive this only today, so it was posted to your board agenda, but I have since sent you the email copy that, that received where this came from, would recommend because of the costs, that we would only solicit bids for the football fields at both Sullivan East High School and Westridge High School inside, I guess, of the, the track, and then further to, to seek the bid for the refurbishment or the, of the track at East, given that it could be damaged with the install of the track.
You've heard the recommendation from Dr. Cox that we bid only the turf for the football fields at Westridge and at East, and also for the resurfacing of the track at East. And it's, we get, we get a motion first, then we'll do the, anybody make a motion?
Actually, I'd like, I'd like to clarify it first before the motion's made, because what you're saying and what Denise said is different.
Okay.
So what she said was she wants to get a quote for East, a quote for Westridge, a combined quote.
Right.
And then a provision for the other one. So as long as we're doing the same thing, I'm fine with it. I just want to make sure that we're going to still do the same.
It's three parts to see if we can get a better deal. What we're trying to do is make sure that we're taking out the soccer and baseball and softball and.
Yeah, that is my recommendation. I was just, my comment was just the scope of the work being reduced from the original board vote to include the baseball and other fields.
I just didn't want to tie her hands with what she was saying.
No. Okay. That's a good, good point. Thank you, Mr. Iverson.
Mike got a question? Do you have a question? Oh, Mike makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Dr. Rouse. Any further discussions? And we'll make sure, Mr. Robinson, that we're not double paying for something that you saw in there about the holes and so forth that Mr. Hubbard mentioned. Any other discussion?
This is, this is just to finalize the design work, so that way it can be put out to bid, correct?
Right. Right. It won't take any other action on our part, because we're, we're giving her the authority to finalize the design and put it out for bid.
And, and just, I don't know if it's been said, but, you know, if we, if we're going to put the bids out, we have to pay for the design work.
Yeah.
For all those fields. So, you know, if we know that it's not likely that we can afford it, there's, it really doesn't make a lot of sense at this point to pay for the design work for the bid. That, so it's, it's saving money.
You said without soccer. Now, East has to have the soccer on it, correct?
Pardon?
East has to have the soccer.
Yes, same field.
Right. Because I know he said something about taking the soccer out.
Yeah, soccer at Westridge, I'm sorry. No, East, East will have the soccer, or everything within the confines of the track, I think is where they did it, plus the, plus the D area.
And they're saying that they can't do the turf without messing the track up? So we'd have to resurface it at East.
And I think he recommended because of the condition too, Denise, is what he was saying that we.
Yeah, he said the condition wasn't very good either. So I was just kind of curious.
Yeah, but this is basically just saying we're going to get a price on it, because we may say, yeah, we may say no. He's guessing 218,000, right?
And that's one of those alternative bids, I think, if I remember right.
Yeah, that was an alternate.
Alternate, okay.
I just, I get why we're just doing the football. I get that. I just hope the other sports don't think we're putting, leaving them behind. Because I, I've, you know, I see all the sports and I get all of it. They all need to be equal, same level. But when you look at the dollars, you see why. I just hope, if we do proceed with this, somewhere down the road, we give love to these other sports and not just push them to the back burner. Yeah. No, that's a good, that's a good point, Mr. Robinson. I, I agree with you. Because I know it could be perceived that way, but also don't want us to not make progress because we can't make all the progress we want. But that's a good point.
Another point to be made is the, the current condition of the track. We're, we're not tearing up anything up there that's worth anything. In fact, you can't have a meat on it or really run on it. I, I run up there sometimes. There's lots of holes, lots of deficits, and it's, it's really many years past repairing. And I think probably just for this reason, waiting, it would be really sad to resurface it a year or so ago, like we talked about, and then to tear it up now to put the turf down.
Further observation is, you know, as I've seen it too, it, it's, the surface is not level. So after waters there, water stands on some of the areas and doesn't drain properly. So it needs to be crowned, yeah.
We did make the track at East Middle School so that the high school could use it too, right?
Yes. Yeah, we designed that way intentionally. It's, it's nine lanes, isn't it? Is that right?
Yeah, so that the high school could go down there.
They're supposed to go down there, that's. Yeah, that's the original. Any further, further discussion? If not, pro call please. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Mr. Jones at desk, conclude the business for the evening and thank everyone for your attention.
That brings us down to public comment on non-agenda items, and there are no public comments there. And then Board Chairman reports. I failed to mention a very key member of the Salary Equalization Study Committee. That was Evelyn Raflowski. I don't think I mentioned her name, and she was key to that and was the official note-taker and record keeper and very important contribution to history of what we've done and so forth. So I, I hope she's still watching that and knowing that. We do have a meeting scheduled for January the 5th, a work session at 4:30. We have a 6:30, January the 7th meeting at 6:30 for the board meeting. And Dr. Cox will be getting information out concerning the tour of the two facilities that we mentioned, the elementary school and also Houston. And I would remind you that we are doing a virtual learning academy. There's been a lot of central office people working on that. And I think you saw in the update today that it's getting to be in pretty good shape, it appears to be. But should there be a need to hire two additional teachers, that money can come out of the CARES money. There's a line item there for personnel, and that would not require any board action. So we, we double-checked on that. And so rather than to, but it, it could require a couple of teachers if, depending on numbers and movements and so forth. And with that said and done, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
January the 5th, work session 4:30. January the 7th, board meeting at 6:30. And also on December the 15th, we've got a 9 o'clock Salary Equalizations Committee meeting at here at Central Office.
5th and 7th here?
Yes. Well, yes, I would, I guess we'll meet here.
I didn't know if he was going to try to tour south then or not.
Well, yeah, we need, we need to go ahead and schedule a tour of south and probably just do it separately rather than to, because we're, we're getting so.
You brought up the virtual teachers and stuff, the academy? You brought, brought up the virtual academy. Are we still looking good for not having teachers teaching both?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, we are.
Yeah, they've worked very hard on that, elementary, middle school and high school. And it's looking good. And there may be, maybe some teachers that teach one period of virtual, but there won't be any regular students in session then. So they'll, they'll rotate. And that's why we might possibly need up to two teachers to give some relief at the elementary level if, if the numbers increase any that they're still working on. And I think there's about 461 students for elementary, if I remember correctly. I don't know who's still here that would know that number, but somewhere, somewhere close to that. We'll start with board comments. Mr. Iverson? Not even at the board meetings are too long now. Dr. Rouse? Mr. Hughes? Mr. Gilmore?
I'm good, thanks.
Mr. Spivey? Mr. Robinson?
I'll speak. I'm sorry.
First off, I understand, I know we've got a lot of emails from parents about the going back virtual. I, I don't know about everybody else personally, but myself, one reason I backed that was when you get told that teachers is having to oversee 60 kids, that becomes a safety hazard for our students and our teachers. So I understand why people's mad, because the kids is at home. But if we got one teacher overseeing 40, 50 kids
But if we got one teacher overseeing 40, 50 kids, there's probably not a whole lot of teaching going on that day. And I know back when I was in school, I hope it ain't the same as it was back then, but to me, you'd have your fight every now and then. If you got 60 kids in one class and you get a fight started, how's one teacher going to be able to handle that? So this was, for me personally, us going virtual was more for the safety of our kids and our teachers because our staff was so short. And I hope everybody understands that because I've seen it on Facebook that nobody up here cares about these kids. Well, that's incorrect. I've seen on there that none of us have kids in Sullivan County Schools. That's incorrect, okay? If we didn't love these kids in all of our schools, we wouldn't be on this board. I'm sorry, I take it probably more personal than most whenever I get told that I don't care about the kids. Okay, and hopefully it'll all be over soon and 2020 will look better. Prayers for the ones that's, we've lost here recently. Merry Christmas to all, and let's all pray 21 is a lot better.
I agree with you totally. I entertain a motion now to adjourn. Mr. Iverson, second.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.